That submitted approved the treasurer's report for January twenty twenty-two.
So what?
Ben Puker.
Second.
Second by Dale Harrington. Johnson.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Given.
Yes.
Harrington.
Me, yes.
Puker.
Yes.
Thank you. Item two, approved amendments of February first, twenty twenty-two, regular council meeting. No corrections, additions? None. Ben Johnson, second by... Second by...
I'll second that.
Mary McDermott. McDermott.
Yes.
Given.
Epstein.
Harrington.
Yes.
Puker.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you. It is now time for the public forum. Anybody in the audience have something to bring before the council that is not on the agenda? Now is the time, place, to address the council. If not, I will close the public forum. Item four, open the public hearing to receive comments on the City of Holdage one and six-year plan for street improvement projects.
This is a report that we do every year. It's kind of like a wish list of what we like to have done with our streets within our city limits. We currently have three projects, there are four projects. The one and six-year plan, the one-year plan is East Street and Roto Concrete is planning to start that weather permitting within about thirty days. Weather permitting, hopefully we get rain. When they come to town, hope they rain. Then the six-year plan has Lincoln Street, South Lincoln Street from fourth down to sixth. We have North Lincoln from fourteenth to eighteenth, and then Fourteenth from Lincoln to West Avenue. If we're able to come up with some sort of money at some point in time, we could always add another street at some point in time. It's just a Form ten that I have to fill out, get it submitted to Department of Roads. So this is just a plan that we keep on hand. And like I said, if something would happen that we would come up with money, there are other roads that we could do.
And just because it's on the six-year plan doesn't mean it's going to get done in six years.
Correct, because South Lincoln Street's been on there for, I'm guessing, thirty-one years, so.
Be exciting to get East Street done, paved.
Yes.
Any questions, comments for the council? If not, I will close the public hearing. Item five, adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash O two, approve the City of Holdage one and six-year plan for street improvement projects.
So move.
I'll second.
There are Givens, Dale Harrington.
Harrington.
Yes.
Puker.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
McDermott. Yes.
Given.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, open the public hearing to receive comments on application for retail liquor license from adjacent entertainment doing business as Holdage Sun Theater and Event Venue. Anybody having any comments, please approach the council, take your name.
Me and Larry Marvin, and I've got a question. Why do we have to serve alcohol at the theater? We've got plenty of places here in town that you can go drink. The theater, I... That's a family thing, and I don't, I just don't see that alcohol would be appropriate for that with the kids. You know, who's going to keep track of everything that's going on in there? It's just wrong. I think it's dead wrong that we have to have alcohol in the theater. I don't, you know, I'm a drinker, I like to drink, but I go to JB's or I go to Lost Way or wherever. I can do my drinking there. I don't have to go to a theater and drink. Have people, you know, it's just, you know, the kids are there, you're... It's just wrong, period. I don't agree with it. I would hope that there would be other people that agree with me on it. You know, it's... I would take my grandchild there, but do I want to take him there while there's a bunch of people drinking and hooting and hollering if it gets to that point? No. I don't think it's, I think you're going to lose business if you do it. That's my opinion, and I just, I wish you guys would think about this seriously, that there's plenty of places to drink. We don't need to put it in into this place here. You know, I'm glad they're doing something with the theater and everything, but the alcohol, it doesn't need to be there. That's all I got to say. I just hope the people will agree and not approve this liquor license.
Thanks, Larry. For your comments, Larry.
My name's Ken Dunlop, and I would like to agree with what Mr. Marvin said. As a former educator, that has nothing to do with drinking, I know, but I've seen the results of some of this, and I'm looking at Holdage right now, and I don't see any family-friendly places in town other than the theater. That's about the only place I see. You can go to a basketball game on a Friday night, that's family-friendly, I don't see alcohol served there. You can go to a football game, but as far as here in town, I don't see any. And I would like to see the theater remain alcohol-free so that it's family-friendly. I agree with Mr. Marvin, I would definitely not take my grandkids there if there's alcohol served. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Any other comments on the subject? Before I close the public forum, I'm going to put my statement, I kind of agree with these guys. If I take my great-grandkids, my kids' aid to go to Carney instead of my aide, it's just encouraging somebody to go out of town. And I appreciate the Sun Theater, all that they're doing to do that. It's going to be quite a venue, quite a project, and I think everybody involved is making that happen. I know when the four families took it over, some of their teenage kids, high school kids and their friends was running the concession stand. And I presume that you'll have some adult there monitoring that. I'd have to agree with Larry and Ken on that. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'd like to, I think maybe rethink it.
Would you like me to ask questions during the open hearing or when it gets to ours?
Go ahead.
Okay. When is the, when's the theater launching? Like, when do you think the open date's going to be?
We're looking at probably mid-April.
Mid-April, okay. And how... So mid-April, how far ahead of time do you need this liquor license passed?
Preferably...
Preferably tonight. In March? March cuts it close, okay.
Mary, can I interrupt? Can you say who you are? I'm sorry, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I'm Jennifer Johnson. I'm the Director of Operations for Adjacent Entertainment.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the manager on the liquor license.
Okay.
Lauren's here with me, he's the president.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Does anyone take their children or grandchildren to the Big Apple? In Carney? Play a birthday parties, the Big Apple?
I do.
Mini golf, you take your kids? Do they, are they bowling, are they playing mini golf, are they playing in the game room?
The game room.
The game room, okay. So in one of the areas where liquor and beer is served, then?
Can't see, seen it in there.
Does anyone take their kids into Lost Way Brewery when they have the Halloween events, the fun runs, the weekly bingo or trivia nights? Anyone take their kids in for those when they're serving beer at Lost Way? I see kids, I'm not in there as much as I used to be, but I see kids in there every time. Have we ever, and I know you haven't been here a long time, Chief, but have you got any complaints about kids getting served at?
Oh, I don't think that's an issue.
Not an issue, okay. I want to point out that there is precedent for doing this at entertainment venues, which is obviously what the theater is turning itself into, an event venue. This is done in Carney, at the World Theater, for every showing that they have. They do check IDs. Everyone with a liquor license is required to check IDs. This is done at theaters in other cities that are trying to expand their offerings for the young people in the name of economic development. The twenty-somethings in Holdage that are looking for something to do. It's my opinion that it wouldn't, it would not stop me from taking my kid to the theater. And she is fifteen, so kind of getting into that teenagers, you don't know what they're going to get up to, right? It would not stop me from dropping my kid off at the theater in this town with her friends, knowing that they're serving beer and spirits there. If adjacent entertainment is committed to following the law and keeping their liquor license, like any establishment is, then they will make sure that there's not going to be a problem. And if there were to be a problem, they're going to lose their liquor license over it, they know that. So... But that's my opinion on the deal. I haven't gotten a lot, I know a couple of you guys have said you've gotten a little bit of feedback. The feedback that I've gotten on the project overall is that they're excited to see another event venue that can be used in different ways. Some of those, you know, one of those different ways is being able to do like wedding receptions, I'm assuming, that's on the list.
Yes.
And even just expanding the market for the people that are going to the theater. I would not be concerned that this theater would lose a bunch of business, sending people to Carney because they're going to serve beer during a show. Also, it's not my place to be concerned, it's their business to make money or lose money with it. That said, we could either try this now and let them conduct their business as they see fit within the confines of the law, they know darn well it'll be enforced. Or we can wait until there's three more council members here.
Mr. Marvin.
I've got a question. You talked about Carney, their theaters and Omaha, Lincoln, we know they do that. That's them, this is Holdage. Do we have to follow what everybody else does? No. Well, can't we be a little bit different once in a while? We've got plenty of places here to drink now, what the hell do we need it there for? I know it's a business, I understand that.
I don't know why we need it at the bowling alley, honestly, Larry.
I don't either.
So do you want to call their liquor license into question because that's a family atmosphere too?
I'm just dead against the theater having liquor there. I don't think it's right. I don't care what Carney, Omaha, Lincoln, whoever, I don't care what they do, but let us be different for once.
Ben.
I hadn't heard anything about it at all, so I appreciate you guys, Larry, you guys both voicing your opinion. My thoughts on it come down to is that place was for sale and sold for a long time and multiple times. So to me, the business aspect of it is, these guys bought it to run their business how they want to run their business. And as long as they follow the law and they do everything that they're allowed to do, should be up to them. If they want to take the risk of serving alcohol there, that's on them. They take all the risks. If they don't do it right, it's going to get, take care of itself. So I don't think... I share your sentiments, because I kind of feel that same way too, it's a family place. I mean, that's, I never drank there, so obviously those are all my memories. But, you know, it's their business to run how they want to. So if they want to take the risk on it, I think that's their prerogative, and it shouldn't be up to us because we don't like the idea to tell them how to run the business.
Yeah, I didn't buy that theater.
So I mean...
Larry and Trent.
Well, you know, the way I look at it is, for the shows, the kids will be there by themselves. And as far as the venue goes, if they want to have alcohol, if somebody can give them a special, get a special designated license, and they could serve the alcohol there. I can, I don't, I don't mind the alcohol with the venue, but I just, I just don't think it should probably go with the show.
Follow.
Trent.
I have some questions, if you don't mind. What is the minimum age that somebody can be working the bar and actually serving alcohol?
Nineteen.
So we could allow nineteen-year-olds to serve alcohol at the theater?
Yes.
Will there be any monitors walking the aisles?
Yes.
Making sure that there is no shenanigans?
Yep. And we have security cameras.
You have security cameras. Will you be serving meals here at all?
For venue events, yes.
For events you will be serving, so catered in?
Yes.
Okay, so you don't have a kitchen, just catered in events? So much like a wedding reception at the egg center or something like that? Okay, very good. And in which case they come in and they apply for a special permit for their liquor license? We're usually very accommodating, so. I have a question on the liquor license. I see that you have box C checked for the retail license. It says beer, wine, distilled spirits on and off sale. On and off sale. So are you planning on having off-sale booze as well? There's no box checked, it says, do you intend to sell cocktails to go as allowed under Nebraska Rev Statute fifty-three, one-twenty-three point zero four four, yes or no?
Which page are you on?
Page two.
Page three.
Neither box checked.
Page thirty, thirty.
No off-sale alcohol? May I check that box then?
That yes and no only applies if you've already checked box I, Trent. I think what information you're looking for is at the bottom where the two asterisks are.
Oh, good, very good, thank you.
Yeah, so like the yes and no on, under I, beer, wine, distilled spirits on sale, only the yes, none of that's applicable because they're not applying for I anyway.
Sure. Okay, when when you're open and we do have the sale of alcohol on a daily basis to whomever decides they want a cocktail that is of age, will there be others there instead of a nineteen-year-old?
Yes. We'll have a manager present.
Every day?
Twenty-one and over at all times.
Twenty-one and over?
Yes.
So we could have a twenty-one-year-old monitoring a nineteen-year-old serving alcohol?
A nineteen-year-old can't sell it, can they?
They can serve.
They can serve it but not sell it, so does that mean that the nineteen-year-old can pull a tap and fill it?
They can sell. A nineteen-year-old can sell alcohol.
Yep.
A nineteen-year-old can, I didn't know that.
Yeah, neither. Is there a separate area for the drinkers to sit in if they so choose to partake? And a separate area for, say, a family with kids to come in and sit away from the drinkers?
The theater area is all...
All-inclusive?
All-inclusive.
There's a drawing in this.
I see. I'm just asking. And what would your protocol be if you did have somebody cumbelligerant, intoxicated and rude?
There is actually an alcohol training course that everybody is going to be mandated to take. And it goes through what you would do in the case of intoxicated people. It gives you a list of how to try to defuse the situation, call law enforcement, whatever the case may be with that individual. But everybody will be required to take that training regardless of if they're selling alcohol or not. If they're working in the theater, they will be mandated to take it.
So they take the class that teaches them how to address somebody that's had too much? But we're going to expect a twenty-one-year-old and nineteen-year-old to be able to handle that?
We hire the right people, yes. And we have law enforcement to call if we...
These classes, how long are they, what's the?
I just took mine last week and it was about eight hours.
Eight-hour class?
And you have to pass a final exam in order to be certified.
And this is a state requirement or just a requirement by you?
It's not required in Nebraska, but you can send in your certification to the Liquor License Commission, and they'll put it on there.
Will IDs be checked as they come in or as they order alcohol?
As they are ordering, and I am going to buy a, one of the license scanners. So it'll show if it's fake, if it's expired. And that is also part of the training course, it shows you what to look for. It gives you a book for out-of-state licenses, so you can make sure that they're legit. But that scanner will take care of any invalid license.
And so at no time will the twenty-one or nineteen-year-old be required to determine whether or not it is?
They still have to look at the license, but that scanner is another check.
Okay.
And we will require everybody purchasing alcohol, whether they look forty or seventy, to give a valid ID.
Thank you.
I follow up, some questions to Trent, if I could.
Sure.
Let me change my mind, Trent, you have to... Ben. Ben, would you consider the Holdage Country Club a family-friendly place?
What time is it?
Daylight hours.
I'm just kidding, yes.
Never been a member, it's been years. So you're saying the Holdage Country Club is a family-friendly place?
Yes.
Does the Holdage Country Club serve and allow beer, wine and spirits on their property while people are out enjoying themselves?
Yes.
Do these same people who are voicing concerns take their children and grandchildren out of the Holdage Country Club?
What's that?
Do these same people who are voicing concerns take their children and grandchildren out of the Holdage Country Club? You can say you don't want to answer if you need to, I realize that's your job.
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I do.
With that in mind, I would move to table this until the next council meeting when we have more members here. That'll also give us a chance to gather more feedback from our constituents and still hopefully get it, and still intend to hopefully, with other opinions, get it done in time for opening. If anyone wanted to second that.
Anybody else in the council want to table or do you want to address the issue now?
I think I'll second that.
What's that?
I think I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion second, McDermott, Ben to table. Given.
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Puker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And McDermott?
Yes.
This motion is tabled, so we will address this in two weeks on March one.
Good discussion.
Yeah, it is. Thank you for your, for your time and your questions.
I hope you hear from some more people too, in the meantime. Thanks, guys.
You're welcome. Okay. Item number eight, receive the Citizens Advisory Review Committee semi-annual report for the utilization of LB eight forty local option municipal sales funds from January one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I'm Greg Erickson, and no, it's not Fire Prevention Week.
We're glad to see it anyway.
I am representing the Citizens Advisory Review Committee. We met last Wednesday on February ninth to review and discuss the semi-annual report and the use of the LB eight forty funds, which we did approve. We find that some of the highlights of the report show that PCDC continues to help develop new housing in Phelps County, continues to work on developing the infrastructure at Iron Horse Business and Industry Park. They are working to support local businesses as well as bringing new businesses, and has raised almost one million dollars to support administrative expenses, which saves tax dollars to be used on economic development. And now I'll turn it over to Ron for his comments.
We've had the report, be happy to answer any questions, I don't want to belabor anything, but I would add that we've got two contractors that are looking to begin housing or construction out of Crew Subdivision this spring, so as soon as the weather breaks, and as soon as they can get cabinets, PVC, and other supplies that have been difficult to get their hands on for the past six months to the year. By the way, of the six townhouses, four are still under construction, five are sold. One is still available for sale, so, and then we have nineteen lots that will begin construction this spring.
And any individual can buy one of those lots, correct?
Correct. We're hoping to get multiple lots under construction at one time, but they're open for sale to the public. The infrastructure was paid for in large part by PCDC and grants that we've been able to secure, so the lot costs are very affordable.
Cool. Welcome to the council, Greg. And new member of the Citizens Advisory Committee. You got your shorts on.
May I ask, what are the prices of those lots?
The asking price is eighteen thousand per lot. That includes all the infrastructure, power, water, sewer, sidewalks, lighting's in place. There are no assessments associated with those lots. So they're smaller, single-family lots. But they'll accommodate a nice three-bedroom-to-bath house. Our criteria is that the sale price of the home or the value of the home at completion and construction can't exceed two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. That complies with the state's rural workforce housing grant that we received to help build the infrastructure.
Thank you.
Question. What about Iron Horse, anything brewing on that?
Well, we made a presentation to the county last week, hoping to secure funds from the county to match the funds that are coming from PCDC and the city to construct infrastructure. We're at seventy percent design completion for the infrastructure package, we're hoping to have that completed here very shortly. We are returning the award that we received from EDA for three-point-eight billion, that was tied to a CARES Act grant. The company that we had used to apply for that grant has decided to move their project to Seattle and downsize it. They couldn't receive the financing necessary to complete the project at the scale they were proposing here. So they downsized it, they're moving into an existing facility in Seattle, Washington. Consequently, we have to find funding elsewhere to complete the infrastructure package. So we've divided it into two phases. Phase one is about two-point-six million instead of three-point-eight. The funding that we'll secure from the county to join the city and PCDC, and one other smaller grant that we've applied for or will be applied... and one other smaller grant that we've applied for or will be applying for leaves about one and a half million to finance unless we can find more grants elsewhere. We're continuing to look for those. There are several bills before the legislature this, this spring that are infrastructure-related to promote construction in rural areas. And depending on what passes and then what form it passes, we'll apply for, for assistance from the state as well.
So is there anybody, do you have anybody in mind to go in out there or are we just building infrastructure so it's there?
We have three active projects, Ben. Two look very promising. We're finalists on two of the projects. One of the things that.
Is that the two that were, was mentioned?
The, those, those kinds of projects, we'll expect to have infrastructure ready when their construction project is completed. So infrastructure could, the construction of that could parallel the construction of a building or, or a facility out there. But we have to be ready. That's why the, the design and, and engineering for all of that is taking place now so that we can finance it at, at the flip of the switch and be ready for a company that may want to go in out there.
So the, the balance that you're going to be needing for the infrastructure and financing, that'll, that'll be PCDC doing that?
We'll probably look at industrial revenue bonds to, to do that. I'm not sure if we'll come to the city or the county. Either one can act as a pass-through on a project like that. It's no obligation to, to, to the city or the county, but I'm, I'm not sure if the city's done that recently or not, but the county has done it before.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions on the, the report? Not, have a motion to accept the, receive the report.
I summon.
Yeah, Harrington, Trent Buick?
Yes.
Did we elect you chairman? McDermond?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Next meeting, chairman. Thanks, Greg, for being on that committee.
Thank you.
Item nine, approve the request from Lost Way Brewery for their annual Lost Way Finder Way 5K event on Saturday, April twenty-third, 2022.
Hello, everyone. Jessica Kraus, I'm with Lost Way Brewery. I'm here with my boss today, Olivia. Olivia, thanks for coming. I brought a couple of maps of what you guys can expect downtown this year and I brought enough for you guys, too. Oh, look, you've got it there. Well, I've got the course and everything. This is just all on one sheet. I wasn't sure what we think. So May, or April twenty-third, we are having our third 5K. We usually have really great attendance. We're hoping for at least a hundred runners again. What we would be asking from the city would be help blocking off the green fenced-in area right in front of brewery. We've got a band, a food truck and a couple of other like little vendors that are going to be coming out, too. We'll have our beer tent outside as well. The race starts at ten AM and everything should be done and over with by about one o'clock in the afternoon. So just a short little timeframe for people to run through and, and I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have.
You said this is certified 5K?
What, what do you mean certified? I mean, it's absolutely 5K. I ran it before. It was terrible.
Like certified at a state level? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
National level?
No.
A lot of people run if they're certified.
Oh, okay, like a sanctioned. No, no, I mean, all of the timing and everything is through Run Nebraska. They're out of Fremont. So they have their little timers and everything set up and they keep track of all of our runners' times and everything, so. I mean, I guess it's certified in that way, but.
How many people did you have last year, runners?
Last year we had a hundred, just about like ninety-eight-ish little runners.
I bet they brought a lot of people with them, too.
Yeah, and then like ten dogs. That was cool.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have dogs, dog treats.
Aren't you looking at blocking off the olive third avenue or half of third?
So the only part that I would need blocked off would be the green area on the, in the front of Lost Way Brewery. So just our half of the street there, so that way Wagner's can still have access to that main. We will have volunteers like at the intersections just to kind of help out with the flow of traffic and everything, but we wouldn't need any of that blocked off. We do our run club down there, through there and there's not a whole ton of traffic and we're not crossing any major intersections or anything, so it's a nice little route, so.
Nice to go down in Veterans Memorial Park and go through that.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's cool.
So it's two laps, so when you finish the first lap, we, we're giving them the option to run through the back of the brewery and they can stop for a mid-race beer. If that's their jam, that's probably the only way. I could get through another 5K, but purely optional. And then they'll do the second lap, so. Two different races. There's the walk slash run and it's just the one lap or they can do the 5K, which is the two laps.
The most in green lines in the alley, or you wanted to block off the entire alley behind Eagles?
No, so last year we worked with the Eagles and pretty much bumped everything up to them. There's no entry from the Eagles through that back way. They have one door, but it's locked and so you can't really get into the back of the Eagles.
Yes, it's carved. I get in there all the time.
Yep, and then where you see, you do you, man. Where you see the pink like start line kind of towards the back of the brewery in the alley, that's going to be blocked off with Run Nebraska's, I don't know what those things are called.
Their digital timer thingies?
Yeah, those things.
Have you conversed with the Eagles? Are they okay with all of this?
Yeah, they're totally fine with all of it. Yeah, so if, I'll pass this around, but there's like these little red dividers. I don't know what they're called, you guys. I'm sorry. What's that?
Lane dividers.
Kind of, but they're like longer and little portable fences, I guess. But so they block all of that off for the race anyway, so nobody's going to be able to get out back through there. Because that's where the start line will be. And then we are leaving the sides of the sidewalk open just for people to kind of come in and have that nice little bit of a flow. And then plus the runners will be going off towards the east, so can't have that blocked off. Unless we want to turn it into an obstacle course, which I'm not against, but I feel like I'd have to charge more.
Did I see where some of this was going to go to eleven o'clock at night?
So I get the SDL for a longer amount of time just to be on the safe side. I don't, I mean, I get the liquor license for that timeframe and if for some reason it's a really beautiful day and people want to hang out outside and maybe we just leave the sidewalk open for the rest of the evening, so. And we'll have the ability to do that if we extend that time on the liquor license, so.
But if we come in at one o'clock and pick up the street, that'd be fine?
Yeah, totally fine.
Any more questions for Olivia or Jessica?
No, you're not talking much, boss. Strong and silent. She's strong and silent. Very smart.
Will Olivia be there to monitor the situation?
Absolutely. She is our fastest runner. She can do like a twelve-minute mile. It's pretty impressive, so.
Cool. Any more questions? If not, motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Trent and Larry Gibbons.
McDermond?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Yes.
Buick?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, guys.
Have fun.
Yeah.
Hope the weather's good.
Yes, I do, too. That's the only thing that stresses me out. Just kidding.
Do you want that blocked off at eight or nine in the morning?
Um, yeah, I think eight would probably be great. I have a registration starting at nine AM and then I have a couple of vendors coming in, too, so.
Okay, we'll come in at eight.
I'd say eight would be perfect. Cool. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten, approve the final plat of Jansen Edition, replat of Lot, Lot One, Block One, Strong's Edition to the City of Holdage, Phelps County, Nebraska.
Just to put any rumors aside, I will not be running the 5K.
The only one who signed up so far.
We don't want to have a medical emergency out there. So, anyway, what I, tonight in front of you, Strong's Second Edition here. This is a project that started back in two thousand seventeen. So this is kind of a cleanup item. What, what happened was back in two thousand seventeen, BD wanted to create a walkway for fire safety for their employees out of their building. In case they have a fire, they have a way to exit the building and get the employees to an area where they can do a head count real simply. So they approached Jansen's and they agreed on a lot split, you know, for a little chunk of sliver on the south side of Jansen's for additional area to the north of Jansen's for, so they could increase their car lot, you know, for show of vehicles. Anyway, we got to the point, we had all the plats complete, ready to go, and then I could not get any confirmation of who was signing the plats from BD and then it just kind of died. So it sat there until this year when they brought it back up and with everything else going on there, they need to get this cleaned up. So this is just kind of a cleanup item. The planning commission already approved the lot split on the south side, which it already has built the sidewalk and there's some retaining wall in there and some transformers, et cetera, all over there. And then also on where Strong's Edition is, Jansen's actually have their concrete parking lot built and cars park there for the last multiple years. So we're just cleaning things up. Nothing new and exciting. Access is going to be through Jansen's Motors already, so. I'll quit babbling.
Good. No questions?
Actually, nobody here from Jansen's to disagree, so I think it's better than you.
Nobody here from BD either.
Apparently they trust me. I don't know why. You must know what you're doing.
Well, if you're trying to redo things, you ought to get it by now.
Motion to approve.
I summon.
Yeah, Harrington makes the motion.
Second.
Glad Gibbons? Seconds.
Buick?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
I like these.
I would like to make a motion to go into closed session to discuss some strategy of the use of LB-840 funds.
Can I have a review?
I will second that.
Before we do that, can we do the open discussion? Before we go into closed session?
You can.
You have to, as well?
Yeah.
Chris?
In your packet, there was a, a press release from the Public Lions Community Ace Natural Gas supplier. They've given back to the City of Holdage about a hundred and twenty-three thou, a little over a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So that selection period will be coming up in April to make your choice on your natural gas providers. So I just encourage people to look at that. At least look at Ace and see if they're viable in price. It kind of gives back to the community. I think I put in my notes that we're looking at some lights on some of the bronzes in town. We've got the one at the Eagle fix, or not tonight. We took it off, but we're trying, trying it on a different bronze. See if it lights up well, but if you get any, take a look at those. Give us some feedback, what you think a lot of lights look. Let's see if they're, because they're really not lighting up very well right now anymore. Been working with, meeting with Ron a little bit on some signage for the Veterans Memorial Park. So we'll probably bring that up and show you some ideas for that in the near future. That's all I got.
Thank you. Dane?
No, thanks.
Captain Evers?
Chief, I was.
Just a Captain America reference, so I. We have an applicant that we completed backgrounds on moving forward with the Civil Service Commission to review and hopefully interview, hopefully get this applicant into the May class. We have a second applicant who is hoping to be ready for the August class. So I've got Sergeant McIntyre following up with him on a monthly basis, just making sure that he's on track and we'll be able to continue with him closer to August. Motorola will be here next week to complete dispatch upgrade. And then the following week of the first, we'll actually do the cut over. So they'll, the dispatch center will be up and running as it should be. So that'll be good to finally get in there and start using it. Looks great, so we just need to use it. We've been having a lot of trouble trying to figure out how we're going to do DARE this year. Just low staff and manpower being able to cover that. Graciously, Dennis Demoud has stepped up and offered to do that out of the kindness of his heart. You know, school is very close to Dennis's heart and he is out there almost every day pushing the button at the middle school for the crosswalk, just making sure the kids are okay. And so he has offered to come in and teach DARE for us this year. And we're going to let him run with that and are very appreciative of his, you know, constant efforts to stay engaged, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Harrington?
Not much. I just had a question. I was going to ask Chris about the, the bullpens on the ball field.
I was hoping to have some drawings for tonight, but I didn't get them. So next thing, I hope to have the drawings, so I can kind of tell you what we're talking about.
Okay, all right.
I do, that's his cost. I don't know what the savings shouldn't be, but I want to show you the picture so you kind of get a better understanding of what it's going to be.
Sure, okay. I, that's it for me.
Mr. Buick?
Just one thing. Had some questions on the Drink Shack, I guess, that's in the public parking lot across from JV still. Is that?
Oh, I didn't know they had that.
Petranis is getting pretty busy in there, starting to line the streets. I'm concerned about.
They said it's going to be a little while before they picked it up, but I didn't know it's going to be this long.
I'll talk to you in a minute.
It takes a special truck to move it and they wait until the truck comes like for another order and then they're going to pick it up. I don't think they anticipated it would be this long either.
Right, they didn't. And it was a weather permitting thing and weather's excellent.
I think it was.
Or had to rain.
It was wait till that truck comes to town, yeah.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. McDermott? Mr. Gibbons?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Abby?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing here.
We save the best for last. Okay, we need a motion to go into closed session then.
Salute.
Larry Gibbons, second. Mary McDermott?
Harrington?
Yes.
Buick?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Gibbons?
Yes.